Turn it up to the powers that be.
Just, to be clear, this is, um, this is your fire department. We, you tell me, gee, um, RCGA four eight five three eleven G. If you're intended to go to Superior Court, fire through that, we have to have a meeting in fifth page to try to resolve the conflict. So that's what we're here for, and what we're trying to do. You want to get started? Because I think you, we were all pretty familiar with what's going on.
I think I've got a pretty good comprehension of how it's supposed to go. My understanding was according to the statute that this was supposed to be a mediation hearing. You were supposed to be the presiding party. And the county commissioners were supposed to be here, at least three of them, to have a quorum to represent the county. Because they are the elected officials involved. I, however, do not see them. In bid that they are not here, I'm gonna go ahead and ask that you certify my appeal, and let's go to Superior Court.
Jason, are you able to speak on behalf of the commissioners this evening? Is that, that's what I was coming to.
Wayne, the statute is very clear. It says that they must be present. He can be here to represent them, but they must be present to do any mediation.
To answer your question, Wayne, I am able to speak on behalf of the commissioners. I'm not a decision maker on behalf of the commissioners. But it's also my understanding, based on the facts presented, that we're here to speak to a specific issue, and that is the fire fee. And we aren't delving into any issues as to valuation.
That's correct.
So, that being said, there's no position for the board of commissioners to take here today. I'm here to express a legal position on behalf of the board.
We're... Is, is this board that is actually, you want to reach an issue as far as value and uniformity? The issue of taxability involves a fire fee, and that's why we asked the county commissioner to represent it. What legal response to me?
Well, let's cover uniformity then.
Okay.
Let's start with that. You assessed my land value at twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars, I believe, for two acres. That is correct? And that's what's on the paperwork in front of you?
This is right, yes, sir.
At the intersection of Moultrie Highway and State Road one twenty-two, in the southwest corner, there's a half acre. It's valued at fifty-seven hundred, just land value. Okay? That's on two state roads. On the northwest corner of that intersection, that gentleman has nine tenths of an acre. His property value is eleven thousand, for almost one acre. At one-four-three-five-five Moultrie Highway, or one acre, for the house and the car court, the land is valued at sixty-one hundred dollars an acre.
Who's the address again?
That, that is one-four-three-five-five Moultrie Highway. That's roughly a mile from my house on the same road. At Cooper and Hires Road, in the intersection of three thirty-three, in the southeast corner, there's two acres valued at twelve thousand dollars. Now, how come they're getting about a nine thousand dollar tax cut on their property value on the same highways? And they have access to two paid roads? One county and one state?
They're probably valued off of the state rate, or off of the county rate. I'd have to look at it. Let me just, I can pull it up in a moment, and we can look it up specifically. But, um, we use the same schedules for all of the land, so it would be easy to show you why there's a big difference.
Well, let's jump down to the south end of the county. Or better yet, why don't we judge towards more than? At eighty-two sixty-nine Valdosta Highway, excellent peak in business. There's two acres. This is a business. It's at the intersection of Jackson and Valdosta Roads. It's valued at eighteen thousand. That's thirty-five hundred dollars less than mine is. I live on mine, I don't run a business out of it. And again, I only have access to one paid road. Let's go down to Greenville Highway. At ninety-one hundred Greenville Highway, one acre and a house. The one acre is taxed at twenty-one hundred and ninety-four dollars. Two thousand one hundred and ninety-four, with a total property value with the house on it of seven thousand.
What is the address again?
Nine-one-zero-zero Greenville Highway. I mean, would I have been better to have bought land in the south end of the county? I mean, is there some reason, you know, taxes are cheaper off of three thirty-three?
Probably not that big of a difference. The area does matter, but not on that road.
Well, I was told a while back that mine wasn't that high because I lived on a state road.
Yes, sir.
Well, these are state roads. At sixty-six seventy-three Greenville Highway, one acre is valued at eighty-one hundred dollars. That's again, almost three thousand dollars an acre less than what mine is valued at.
The size and shape, there's more factors than just the road, and the size of the frontage. And that's why the first couple inches are both less than acre. That's smaller than the minimum building size in the county. So we have to make them worth less, because they can't really do what they live. The others, I'm trying to pull them up, but my connection's not good enough to look at them.
They're saying to be a great deal of inconvenience.
Well, according to the state, we presented our audit records from last year, from the Department of Audits and Accounts. And we are here for them overall. And that's the measure that we have to use to justify some purchase, calculated by the Department of Audits and Accounts. We're within statistical range. I said, it's, well, as I said, I can, I can show you just as many examples, whether they're higher than yours, but we're looking at, we're looking at the map on this one. Yeah, like, for instance, the, uh, one acre of Douglas Cooper, on that fourteen-three-fifty-five Moultrie Highway. It doesn't have, it's a long skinny parcel. It's not as desirable as a short piece of property where you've got a plain road running in depth. There's just not a lot of depth.
You mean my two acres that I had to get, that the previous owners had to get a special easement from the state of Georgia to be able to run a covert from the back of the property to the ditch in front to drain the excess water off? So when it rains, one-third of it's not a pond?
Well, it's again, you've been in the previous state property, and you may not have.
You know, I'm, let's be realistic, as well as responsible.
Yeah, we look at this, I, I, I stand firm that we've already lowered the value down to eighty-something thousand, and I don't think...
Well, I think twenty-one-five for two acres, that when it rains, three, four inches, one-third of it floods, is a little excessive, considering these other property values that I've looked at and seen throughout the county.
Have you seen anything?
A business on two paved roads valued at three thousand dollars an acre less than what I'm paying.
Have you seen anything in the county that sold, a house on it, two acres, that sold for eighty thousand dollars?
Say what now?
Have you seen anything in the county that sold for eighty thousand dollars for two acres of house?
I haven't looked for anything that sold for eighty thousand dollars.
You're probably not gonna find it. They, they, that's why we have to look at the total here, to actually value your property, not...
I made it right now, you couldn't sell anything for sixty thousand dollars for venture trades where they are.
We, we have evidence to say otherwise. And all of those presented at the Board of Equilization, it was done, that's why they, well, I guess we did, we kind of stood by the revision. We didn't talk much about value of more equilization. So trying to check with these.
Well, let's get on to the other part of this then. I contacted the Georgia Department of Revenue, and they have plainly stated that any amount of money listed on a property tax bill is a tax. That it is illegal for the state of Georgia to collect fees through the property tax commissioner. And on my property tax bill, it says fire protection, one hundred and thirty dollars. And at the top right of the column over here, it says net tax, it does not state fee. And for the county to claim or bill me for a tax for a fire department, according to the Georgia Com- Compliance Rules and Regulations two zero five dash one dash two dash point zero two subsection two, no fire department shall exercise the general emergency power set forth without paying a certificate of compliance issued from the Georgia Firefighter Standards and Training Council. In other words, not only can the fire truck not leave the fire station, but the county can't collect any fire fees, or taxes in this case. You've had the tax commissioner commit a crime by collecting a tax that you're claiming is not a tax, that's a fee. So which is, is it a criminal act that you instigated and conspired to do? I know this is before both of you gentlemen came here, and I understand that, it's not your fault, and you didn't do it. Nonetheless, it has transpired and happened. I don't believe that this board can settle this, and I think, again, you need to certify my appeal. Let's go to Superior Court, where somebody with some legal jurisprudence can handle the matter.
That was unbelievable, actually, you had me here, it's nuts.
I did.
That's my attorney, I don't want to tell it back.
So there's, um, a couple of things going on here. One is, fire fee is treated differently than a tax, because it's allocated for a specific service that the county provides. I, I would agree with Mr. Mark, that this is not an issue that's to be settled in this conference, nor is it an issue that would be settled in Superior Court on appeal. It would be settled through a lawsuit that you'd have to initiate. Because what you're claiming is, one, you're asserting the rights of the state. The state is the one who enforces those rules on our fire department. Our fire department has a certificate of, um, compliance, and can respond to fires so long as they hold that. It's not going to revoke. The state has worked with our, our department through gaining compliance from where we were. So we are permitted to operate as a fire department under our certificate of compliance. So, they're contrary to your assertion that we are constituting a fraud or dispatching illegally, that's not the case. And we'd be happy to argue that point with you in court. I don't think this is the right venue for that issue, nor do I think you should expect to have that heard on appeal in Superior Court for this particular matter. It's a, it's an ancillary matter that we'd have to litigate.
I believe that Chatham County has already had to go to Superior Court on something very similar to this.
Do you know the result of that?
They just resolved it this year.
It's a fire fee, it's not attached?
But it's not attached to the property tax bill.
That's correct.
It is separate.
That's correct.
This, however, is on this. And according to, and I told you his name two seconds ago, and I apologize for not remembering his name. But the gentleman that runs the compliance for the state of Georgia Fire Departments, at that last month, the Brooks County Fire Department was not compliant. They may be compliant today, but we're not talking about today. We're talking about back to twenty-fourteen. They have not been compliant in these years past, and that's why we are here.
And, well, I disagree. And I'd be happy to talk with you after this about why we aren't able to continue operating even out of compliance. Unless this board wants to hear further on that, I'd be glad to talk with you as long as you would like about that issue. Um, I understand your position, but when we have a certificate of compliance, no matter what our status of compliance is, that's the state saying we can continue to put fires out regardless of...
Okay, and according to the statute that I read in regards to all this, sure. That's it. Your got it.
Her number is on, it is not, sir.
Would somebody please explain to this gentleman that the burden proof in this hearing is on the county?
For the value uniformities, they're for the county as far as taxability, and say for the taxation's rule of exceptions, you said, it's a burden proof. Sensual, would you?
And, uh, one other thing in relation to the fire thing is, and I'll look to get, if, you know, if I can find this. Probably got it again from my, this poor filing system here. And I know it's a little, but I had it at the house, I saw that I did. As far as fire departments go, according to the state of Georgia taxes, and what countries can use taxes for, and this is current as of this year, they can have a fire service that puts out brush fires. It does not state anything in the use of tax money by the state of Georgia four counties to have a residential fire department. And that's in black and white. I do have it somewhere, it does state it. It also states that they're supposed to provide care for the injured. This county does not do that. We're not here to discuss that. We're here to discuss property taxes. And anything that is on this tax bill is a property tax. It's that simple. It's in black and white. So again, for the third time, I'm asking this board to verify or certify my appeal, and send me to Superior Court.
Yeah, we called them, yeah, I think, to try to reach you in the middle and reduce your value, reduce your condition. So, I mean, I, I think all we can do is send you on your way, because I agree, you know, it's not proper venue for the rest of it that you're bending. So I'll make a motion to, to, um, to certify this lawsuit.
Mr. Chairman, I second their motion.
All the way to side out?
Aight.
Aight.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate your time.
I will get you the information, this is probably the end of the week, but it's twenty-five hours, and you, once I get to you, you'll have like ten days. Every day, say, I can't remember.
Is that in addition to the twenty-five dollars that I paid already?
For what?
To appeal this to Superior Court.
You shouldn't have paid, who, you paid for the twenty-five already?
You.
No, I ain't got anything from you yet. I told you it wouldn't be twenty-five when we get that way.
I paid it, yeah.
Okay, yeah, but that's what, twenty-five hours. And I, um... When I, when I see that, I'll say, I wrote down all these addresses, I, I'll, I'll put those out, so a lot of values are different. You can just get some of this.
And by the way, thank y'all for your time. I know you probably just get paid to, to come up there and listen to people rant, raving, "Wayne, bitch, you're on the throne."
Just after, what we have to do, we have to follow the law, it's all we can, that's all. Our hands are fat. I guess this concludes our summary here.
I might have filled out your card.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Y'all want to adjourn? Yep. Is there anything else? Just Mike, man? Just Mike, you have paper?
Come now.
Mr. Mark, do you have anything else, anything else?
I'm good, gentlemen, appreciate it.
I move it. Anything else, sir?
Uh, no, if you all are down, I'll...
Yes, sir.
I'll load some stuff.
Are you gonna be back tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was, I'm gonna have a question for you tomorrow, dude.
Chief Catlin, thank you for coming. You're welcome, sir. Thank you, sir. Appreciate Mr. Mark, thank you, sir.
I appreciate it, yes, sir. I would give a second favor.
We turn now, call the order, we'll hear the terms of that one. It is nine twenty-one. At this time, I'm gonna call our regular scheduled meeting board. Laid with you a three U S. prayer, people, pray, appreciate, sir. We need you.
Be glad to. Our heaven father, we come this afternoon, as I'm gonna let you know how. We first want to say thank you, life, health, and strength. We thank you for Brooks County, Georgia, United States of America. We thank you for all your assistance, for your support of us. We ask Lord, the work that we do here, will be based on justice, righteousness, and the depth of our ability to serve the people of Brooks County and the state of Georgia. These are many blessings we are asking, in the name of your son Christ Jesus, in the name of your own spirit, amen.
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 I hate to bother y'all, but this lady could use some assistance. She needs to renew her tag and her clothes, and wanted to leave this piece of paper for somebody. Ms. Micah, could you get that to Mr. Beck?
It's a disability tag that hangs on my, really near...
Is it a check?
It's just...
You just need to drop off the paper?
Yeah.
Sorry for the interruption.
I live in Valma, just inside Brooks County.
Okay, no problem.
Prostagast these days, it's hard to come back from there.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming to pray with us.
We're gonna need approval of minutes from our previous two meetings, our executive session and our regular meeting, please.
This is the executive session, ladies.
Almost finished, huh?
Yeah. There's only one copy of that, it's just, uh, private.
This looks like a whore.
Yeah, it is.
In your signature, I'm sorry. I mean...
Yeah, that's right.
I know, I, well, I could have read it yesterday. Oh, you're not like, always look. Had that. Mike, don't take care of the correctional right there.
And, uh, alright, we're working.
Um, make motion to approve the being minutes with one correction from the regular meeting on the eleventh of the night on the back. You found my here, sir?
I second.
And I've made motion to approve the minutes for the executive session on the night as well.
I second. All the way to side out?
Aight.
Alright, now I need approval for the proposed agenda.
I move that we do approve the proposed agenda, and continue to all items and issues are, 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 are handled.
Aight, second. You second that? Alright, Mr. Wayne, I guess we have no more appearances.
I'd like to appear.
Uh, first items, the personal combinations, there's only four of them on there.
Alright, that's under...
Uh, number three, the... Number one for the board of education, I just stumbled across that, happened to see the education, same ownership, so what they did, the others were all requested. It's on the, it's on Webster Road, it was some of that stuff, right behind the... Yeah, it was the high school, I noticed that was... Oh, it's around the house is there? So, across from...
Yeah, okay, I know where you're talking about. Right past the, or it's right before you get to the, actually, the first entrance, it's a school from...
Right, yeah, one of the, one of the three actually joined that entrance there. So, but yeah, it's on the, it's the high school, it's, they have the fires on the, on Webster Road, it's just never been added up yet, I think. Okay. Two straight forward, um, yeah, the... Okay. Next, number, I guess it's the number four. We got a board of equalization decisions, so I need a couple of things from all these. Before we get to those, I have, um, one, two, three of the, I mean, you can sign four with dollars, if you don't mind. They're listed on there. Just the... Whether it helps any, I'm sure who they are. Some of Brewer people, gosh.
Play it like so. Sure is.
Yeah.
Why in the world?
I don't know. Uh, it was Brook Forest and, um, Nissan Gandy, the two that were signed. That, if you really...
Both of these are Houston?
Yeah. If they really had any problems with the house, they'd explain to him, he'd do...
Oh, they should have, yeah, by what they say, they should build those, but, oh, why they ever... Oh, they should have, yeah, by what they say, they should build those, but why they ever for what they say.
Yeah, that's what they said, so, you know. I, I was able to take the condition out, it didn't make any difference, really.
I wouldn't think it would.
Yeah, the land stayed the same, all the large pieces, uh, and then.
Are you sure about that, because forty-three fifty seven?
That's the piece that's right across from what I just sold.
Oh, okay, I just.
Same property.
It's the same one you just signed, okay.
I mean, it's, it's the same acreage.
Same one you just signed, yeah. Same one you be signing, real soon.
He is probably.
Brother Brew there, certain brother Brew, yeah, brother Brew gets the next trip. You be brother Brew and get him the next.
I had a chairman decision.
Who's gonna take it, but somebody.
He's gonna go back to brother Brew.
So, look at that sign, I can see those budget papers, the rest of those are just decisions. Um, there's not a lot of information on what you're signing, but all the decisions are actually behind there, written out a few on it, though.
What is this one? Four million, eight hundred six thousand, eight hundred dollars.
I have no idea, which one is that?
Down you slash, she forty-three from the box.
Twenty-fourth, twenty-seven.
Probably, I, that's gonna be the, uh, those, well, yeah. Um, it's, that is just a little bit more than what it was last year. Yeah, I think remember what I said, so there's a lot of these decisions are scratched out of the change.
So, we had it vying that.
Five of us.
Five million, three hundred ten thousand.
Yeah, we basically, we went up about ten percent and just kinda split it, we just went about five. So, yeah, it, it was just.
So, that was, that was the decision of board of equalization.
That was the decision, yeah, we, we did a telephone hearing with their representative of Atlanta, and we came to, we came to an agreement and the board agreed to that.
Avid.
That one, we haven't really finished yet, um, there, what was that, postponing it, but we're dragging that out, um, they may end up in the seventh conference, I'll say, we got a couple more weeks before we have to finalize anything. Waiting on some, to see if the development authority board is gonna do anything different from what they've already done. So, it's going back to them, essentially.
Okay.
But the board of equalization did not make any changes.
I'm not believing what I'm reading from this. Are you serious?
We believe that. Oh, again, that one. There was a heated discussion about the decision room one, and, uh, they decided to make a difference just because of the, uh, 'cause the trucks drive by the house, essentially.
I have seen it all. I thought it was something else, I've seen that, that takes a case. Well. Well. I can look and I can too, I know, a lot of protractors.
Yeah, hold, be right, right, from my right.
He's on the, uh, number four, and we're back about seven, eight pages.
Yeah, they had a ten percent reduction in traffic.
Mars.
I figured Mars, that one, it's thirteen percent, um.
Patrice Mobley.
The audio of the noise from the.
Kenneth and Patricia. Uh, Adrian.
I, I figured that was Kevin.
Kimley, Richard, and Patricia.
No, yes, 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 okay.
It starts out there, I should probably, yeah, and when you look on the map, it is a straight shot, it's under thirty-four, right in the back of the house.
Ducts and property, everything is, you economic.
Do you use companions?
Less.
Yeah, it was a new.
Determined by road conditions. Evidence present by tax payers, home, tax payers and homes. Uh, cause the road deteriorated, and land price dropped by, was that change with that?
Ten percent.
Ten percent.
I never heard of that.
I've never heard of that. That's a new one, old man.
Anyway, uh, just, I put on there, the pages I just signed, at the bottom, I put some statistics, there's some numbers for you. We had a total of a hundred twenty-five real property appeals, six personal, eight mobile homes, so total of a hundred thirty-nine appeals this past year. Uh, of the hundred thirty-nine seventy-three, so just over half went to the board of equalization, and twenty-eight of those did not show up, so. That, that's, well, you know, without considering the values went up about fifteen percent, a hundred forty-five.
I figured it's gonna be worse than that, um.
How many appeals again?
Hundred forty, hundred thirty-nine, hundred eighty-five. Yeah, hundred thirty-nine.
Twenty-eight didn't even show up.
Yeah.
Some people show up twice.
Some show up twice. Finally got to sell the, the other house there.
Don't make me get ugly on film.
You're all good, you're okay.
The other one, yeah.
Roger. Okay, so we got the withdrawals, it'll sound like some of the decisions already, any more questions on the viewing decisions? Yeah, there, there weren't any major changes. Uh, so we conference, I'll, I'll get the stuff together and send it in. I'm gonna answer whatever, there's, there's a few that even, uh, they were all, it's all accessible to the disability, so it's not just a rate, but each one was a triangle. Yeah. A hundred fifty-five, and every is a part of it.
Absolutely.
And his.
It's your picking.
His twenty, yeah, and his twenty thousand was a little overstated because, because of the way, um, system works, it, it should have been a slot, anyway, that's. It was a, I would have to keep the, kind of baggage, the same with the stipend increases we bought the. That's not a big deal, I think all that. Yeah. So, uh, number five is next, we got some correction orders. Uh, most of these are, couple of these are the appeals and then some audits and some votes again, people are still coming in, laying out votes that they don't have. It's never an exception. Nothing, nothing major there. Oh, that at least didn't, they need a signature on it, I'll say. That was the one where last month, we took the removal from conservation, the medical. Yeah, I need just a signature on the release. So, they have already paid, yeah. They've already paid it, so maybe you release that, so they can do what they need. Any questions about any of those, it's pretty easy there. Go on to the next item. We are coming up on the end of the year, so. Uh, number six, in your mind, you need some first page here. So, there should be more, uh, that's it, those are intent to terminate letters, or these are the people who give you letters for intent to terminate a conservation code. What that means is one of the owners who's a party to the government has died last year.
Oh.
So, we sent a letter to the family's identity, um, we sent them, we sent them last week, so they would know that the covenant has ended, and they will need to start over for next year. So, um, yeah. So, is the next page, is the actual copy of the letter that we sent, and I think, if it was actually low. So, that's the letter that was mailed, the list of people mailed the two. After that letter, there's another letter on the backside, that is the attempted breach letter. It's, we changed it a little bit this year, they just worded it a little bit better, it's definitely a lot easier on us to send this to a few people, 'cause there's less personalization. Uh, but we mailed that out last week also to the pages behind it, to the four, four or five pages, the list of people, they all got that letter.
Well, this is breaches.
That's the breach letter, now, the bulk of it, it says on your list, you got a reason for breach on the right side. Most of them were ownership charges, so they will give us all, these aren't, we don't expect. There's probably only one or two that might have to pay a bill. I think maybe, uh, if there's a second one, it's gonna be a follow-up. But for the most part, at least people were able to, there's no issues when the due owner continues to come in, they just have to come in here and do it. So, this is the letter telling them that they have to come in for general reversion, of course, to continue. Yeah, and we got a few more, um, there's a date on these things, it's the second or third or something, so, over the past couple of weeks, we added a few more, and we'll have to send any more letters or something else next week, probably. And that is, I don't think either one of those are required, uh, we did, the required letter we sent out last month, once they're expired, required. These are about the courtesy, just to get the thing win, so we don't have to send their certified letters later on.
Okay, I suppose this, I asked you a hundred percent certified.
It's a regular mail, they're courtesy, this is to make it, you know, that's something, you can come in.
What's the deadline on that, March first?
March fir, well, April first is the deadline to apply, March first, we'll send our certified letters, so it'll be thirty days until I can come. Hopefully, I'll come in before we can deal with that, other than I do the certified letters. Any questions? You have some words?
Do you flip over?
The, there's a much, there's not as many of them as I expected, um, there, there's still a lot of covenants that are expired, so there's not that many. Okay. Next is number.
Seven.
Seven. That is Chuck, send us a letter, number four, okay. The social security, my, for home state exemptions, there are different levels of home state, over sixty-two. The home state is based on age and income, the S three and S four is based on age and income. That income is still ten thousand dollars of earned income, but the maximum amount of social security that any family is allowed changes every year, that's what this is. It is up to now eighty-seven thousand and forty-eight dollars. So, you can still receive eighty-seven thousand dollars of social security benefits that do not count towards that earned income.
Now, seriously, who gets that count?
It actually.
Jesus Christ.
It's actually, because you still get ten thousand of earned income, so you can go over that by ten thousand and still qualify for this.
Mike, are you gonna break it?
You can actually collect ninety-seven thousand dollars of social security and, and it's still be a hundred and ten thousand dollars of earned income, 'cause it should be down this time, but, anyway. So, that, that was, uh, I don't know what it was last year, uh, I know several years ago, it was like sixty, and that was something eighty-seven, so. But because it is a change to an exemption, we'll need a motion to adopt that new social security maximum value.
Alright, I need a motion. You need a spirit, uh, you need a motion to adopt the new social security maximum home state exemptions.
I, I move that we adopt the new social security maximum.
Thank you, sir. You got a motion, you got a statement? Alright, next page over, very similar situation. This one is also from Chuck, the program revenue involves the home state disabled veterans exemption. So, rather than being an amount of money that they can receive and still qualify, this actually changes the values of the property that is exempted. So, it, the, and it is, I don't know, but it says what it's based on, but it changes every year also. So, now, the amount of the exemption is up to a hundred nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars.
And all this is coming from the state of Georgia or?
Yeah, it's, that's the actual letter from, uh.
The Department of Revenue?
Yeah, it's directly to local government services.
Oh, okay.
He's the guy that sent me in on his class at different.
Yes. I, uh, I move that we accept the new accelerated amount to convey, um, do you think about it?
In a second.
In a second. I might not say it just right, but I think that was something.
Pretty close.
Motion key?
Just so y'all have an idea, I don't know what it was last year either, but that means essentially, as you say, a hundred percent disabled veteran, if someone qualifies for this exemption, can have a home value up to just shy two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars before they have to pay taxes. So, if the property, home state properties value more than two hundred seventy-five thousand, the home tax bill, the home sale. Alright, it's good, see, this is really quick. Alright.
I have my number nine. We picked that up in eleven.
Mike has got number nine. This is Shager, probably got number nine. That's right, number nine.
Yeah, I think I got number nine. Any of them find person that they would help?
Yeah, that's where, that's where it starts, alright. Number nine is the big thing for this meeting, the main thing we have to do with this meeting is get this pre-ville digest approved, so. By all the pre-ville, what's the date, January tenth?
August the fifth.
January fifth, okay, January fifth is the day we have to have the pre-ville digest to de-tax commission base. So, she, we have to turn it over to her by January fifth. We're not gonna meet between the first of the year and the fifth of the year. So, this is our last meeting before the fifth, so we go ahead and get this thing approved, so that I can have it turned over to her by January fifth, if we require to do. These are, I only printed first and last page, you'll see it's something, it's two hundred pages, hundred and ninety-eight pages of mobile homes. What it moves down to, there are sixteen hundred and sixty-two pre-ville mobile homes, and non-home state and mobile homes. So, typically not home or occupied, so sixteen hundred and sixty-two in the county, uh, that's up about three percent from last year. Uh, that's up about three percent from last year, last year we were sixteen fourteen. The total value of those mobile homes is, uh, down at the bottom, thirty-five million, six hundred and two thousand dollars. And it is NADA, it's the stuff we look at all the time. Um, I've got statistics if you want them. Uh, it's very close, it's about, it's up about thirteen percent from last year, three percent more mobile homes, thirteen percent more value. Is that an increase from last year. Now, that will change, we'll give it to Maggie on the fifth, she'll send out bills, and then people will start coming in and apply for home state. So we'll come off the pre-bill digest, go through the real property digest, uh, they'll kill the value, that's what they, so, so it will change some before it's finalized, but this is what we're starting with.
Okay, so you need a motion to.
There's two, uh, yeah, the next page, also there's the consolidation report, it's on there, breaks it down by, uh, tax issue. Little bit of title and then tax issue. And I need a motion to approve the pre-bill digest, it can be turned over to the tax commissioner prior to January fifth.
A motion to approve the pre-bill digest, so it can be turned over to the tax, uh, commissioner about the, about the January fifth.
Second that motion.
Y'all be surprised, that's what, you know, the property revenue checks on us all the time, and they, that long checklist of things they look for, that's what the big ones, they wanna make sure that digest is approved on time.
Approved on time.
Because it's hard, you know, you wanna wait till after the first of the year, you only got four days. That's done. See, we're running along. Who we at? Ten, meeting schedule. Nobody has any problems, we'll keep doing the same thing, five fifteen on Saturday, Wednesday. So, y'all. No, I don't think we don't need a motion, if you wanna keep it saying, that's the list. Unless y'all, unless y'all wanna change it to a different date and time.
It'll be in February.
Works for me.
You also hear that word? No, I really won't be. I'll be, I will be out town, literally. I, I know, on the eighth of February, I'm leaving. So, you know, I'll be back on the third of March.
Yeah, we can, uh, we can do that.
Yeah, we can, one, one, one happens.
The vice chairman here is handling it.
That will be Melvin. That will be Melvin. The vice chairman Melvin, he can handle it. Oh, yes. Oh, we guess.
I know there's some stuff.
Yeah, we can, uh, we will deal with that either, we can, we can be. End of January, you gotta sneak one in, or we can, uh, it doesn't matter. We'll see how much we got going on first of January.
Yeah, we could do another day in January.
That's right, or you can.
March is on when you got a conflict, right?
Yeah, February is on, I got a conflict, I'm good.
February eighth.
I'm, I'm good on March.
So you can go on most of February.
Yes. Then, but, yeah, we can meet on second, if that's okay. Yeah, the second of February.
February second, I'll be here. I'm probably as long.
We'll talk about it in January, see if it's even necessary. Because if, if people aren't coming in and doing identification stuff, there's nothing much for y'all to sign, we can get something off. Yeah, I'll probably be out in June or July too. But this date comes, season works, if this thing works. Okay. Mr. Shager. I need you to get this one in before the next meeting.
Want to do it now?
Can't do it now, because you gotta do it in the courthouse. But I just got your signed official thing here, so. Get with me, when you get a chance, call first, I'll call Belinda, make sure she can do it.
All right.
And I've got, got the others, got the certification. The only thing, I'll need that one other signature saying that you're over twenty-one and have a high school diploma. I don't know why they make this do it every time, but they do. I tried to just send the old one, and they made me get it through last year. But anyway, so you're good till, through tonight, but the next, the end of the year, you'll leave.
Yeah.
So sometime in next week or this week, whenever you can do it. All right. Uh, moving on, let's see this, we'll number eleven.
I'm reading it.
Okay, um. Yeah, I got emails to justify the nature. They, they're in there. Uh, they fixed their skyline highway, we can't see all the trees, see what anymore, the steel towers are, are up. Which makes it incredibly dark when we leave them. You just have plenty of light to get out, and then they don't. Um, it's gonna be a while on the, on the carpet. It's gonna be a while. Scott came in with that, I think it won't happen, I have to move everything. There's a lot of stuff to move. But, so I'm sure whatever it requires, it just, it's gonna be out there. I did, I said it was five, and I asked for some rugs and stuff. So, let's see how it is. We haven't had any more problems, to tell you the truth.
I wasn't sorry, I thought you were just like, we're okay.
It did not just die, it was, that was, um, she didn't respond, I mean, he came by and emailed about it, so. So it wasn't just, you know, just. It was a draft, some of that.
So you got personal property audits, you're having problems with?
What's that?
Personal property audits. Need guy that's on four non-compliant.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we get that, but look at this budget stuff first, this, this is gonna be exciting. I, Sarah's been out, she's back today, but he didn't give a news expenditure report from her. Um, I emailed her, she just didn't get it. But I got one for earlier, come on. As of November eighteenth. We now have, uh, budget numbers on our, on the floor. For the past two years, we just had, you know, how much we spent and how much was budgeted. Well, I started looking. And I realized that the line items didn't add up, what I thought we did. So, um. On the foot of the page. If I ever, uh, put the page.
I'm already there.
Right here, this is, uh, the, this is the fourth, couple pages up. The, um, the current request is what we had requested in the budget. That other stuff on the left side is what was there a couple of years ago. If you look at the fourth one from the bottom. Is where our difference comes in, that's why the bottom line batches. So rather than change this budget in the bottom, she just added the, the missile light inside of the grid to type this one. Any questions?
I see that.
Yeah.
How is that a lot now?
We have numbers now. And we'd be kind of told that, you know, it's your budget, spend it how you want, just don't go over it, so. That's, that's what I'm going with. Because I can't, you know, I can't make any particular item match up. The other side, but we can make the bottom line.
We're gonna have a shortfall.
Oh, no, I'm wrong, we're, we're good. Our bottom line's right.
How did, how? How, who put this fabric on the line in there?
That was the, um. I, I would have to guess, I don't know, but that's what I was given, I think.
So is this, this is. I went to school, and I know how to add numbers, and those numbers don't add up now.
They.
I'm sorry.
If you add the whole column, they're good, so we're here, here and here, that's right. That's what, this is what we asked for, and this is what we got. So we're, we're there.
What we asked for is what we got.
That'll work out. This is requested, and this is what we asked for, is what we got. So we're good. It's just, you have to divvy it up.
That's right.
You're gonna count, man.
So is that expendable?
Yeah, yeah, that, that's the, oh, yeah, that, she, she's basically told us that, sure, if we, you know, it's always.
We can spend it on one house?
It doesn't matter if we go, if we spend the money on office supplies or education.
It's looking like cell phone is gonna be a problem.
You think? And I can't even, I can't figure it out. Like. Where, look at the, uh.
And I, I know you have a county cell phone.
Yeah, it's fifty dollars, and it's on there, that part's no problem. It's the internet service.
That's, that's right, I'm sorry.
Where's that wind stream account?
Cell phone slash mobile phones, and then the internet service.
Yeah. And I don't have any control over those.
I, I know, well, at least, that's what I'm saying, at least it's got, you have to a thousand of pad in there for that.
Well, that's, uh. But, so the, the. Cell phone forty dollars and forty cents a month, we're good there. Uh, that's actually what we budgeted for, so there's no problem with it. Wind stream for internet in, uh, August was a hundred and sixty-six dollars. September was eighty-five, and then another one in September for two hundred. And I, I can't make any sense out of it, I don't know how to split it up. We don't, I don't even get a feel, this is all I received. Uh, telephone's the same way, I got one month at two hundred thirty, and three around eighty.
That's right.
So I don't. It's not enough of money, it's not enough, it's nothing to worry about, it just frustrates me, because I don't know how much it's ever gonna be, I don't even control it. I will say that because, well, like with school, when we're all able to go to Tipton, the past time around. That's a, that's a lot cheaper one budget for. Because we don't have the schedule, when we make the budget, I just, you know, plan on six to a plan of four weeks. Because we know we can always do that. So any cost, right under a thousand dollars a week, sit to a plan, I mean, it costs near five thousand dollars for all of the schedule tickets. So, so we're handling that. There's a theory, right now, we're handling payroll, because we haven't been able to fill that issue position for a while. Or had it on, filled for a couple of months now.
Had anybody apply one?
Nobody, I mean, uh. No applications, nothing, not even, just not whoopies, nothing.
Is the job in Apple Town?
Yes, some indeed, just like one before.
But nobody.
It's not just us, it's all the departments, and it can be a couple of years, I don't know. But, yeah, the road captains, they had, they had the road department, they had, you know, the administrative end of the building. Um, it's just no applications, and Kim's working it, she's giving, anything that comes in, it's not even for us, it's, it's, it might be used to give it to everybody. All right, personal problem, ready? This is new. There are four accounts there. We got this second one, we got, I forgot the other, the other one, you know, it's in the show.
That's on the square?
Yeah, we're gonna say, say, just.
Okay.
Just past the, that's. Yeah, it's worth trying to adapt. Yeah, just past the. Anyway, I.
Right here?
I'm wrong.
Keep moving.
Yeah, passes stuff. I'm wrong, we're still, our expenditures are still under budget, we're not gonna have any problem. We, we don't spend everything, you know. We had, we had, we spent a lot of money upfront, it's basically budget for what we're saying. We spent a lot of money upfront, because they're contracting stuff, and we spent a lot of money in, because we got a bunch of mailing stuff to get along with during the month, or end of the year. So we got two big times, and the rest is kind of slow, but, but we don't, we're not in danger of doing anybody, we should have put on money.
And those are the ones we got for audits?
Yes, so these are four accounts that are being audited. Now, I wanted to say. The. The top two, this is their second time. They complied the first time, they just ignored it the second time. That third one on the list, I say we just let it go.
Absolutely.
There is no reason to bother that one. And, and, yeah, I've seen her counting, uh, Gary is, I've talked to Gary, I've talked to everybody about it, uh, they just do herself taxes, they don't have all the information that was requested. But she was complying the first time around, and she's stressing out over, and, um, and it's really, we need to get her off the list, there's no reason for us to audit that, that particular account.
I will take her on.
Absolutely.
All right, so good there. Uh, the other one, we, we picked up some inventory, where they were audited for sixteen through eight, sixteen through eighteen, yeah. They were audited sixteen through eighteen, this is nineteen through twenty-one. Uh, we picked up some inventory, not inventory, we picked up some equipment, in that two thousand and sixteen audit. And, um, and the inventory was a little bit understated, so we added some inventory and equipment the first time around. We've had that same inventory over the past three years, or same equipment over the past three years, and their inventory is actually going up. So what they're returning is the same stuff that we picked up on the audit, plus higher inventory. Just looking at it, it looks good, they're not trying to get away with anything. Um, I can try to reach out, send them a letter. I'm looking to be good. Uh, but it's not something that we wanna go subpoena route on, I don't think. So I can try to, I'll try to call them, see what I can do. Uh, there's top two.
Well, I mean, we can subpoena, correct?
Yeah, we can subpoena. The top one of the agenda was that, um. The. That person has three different businesses, it's the other two that are been audited, this one is not. But the other two, he, he said everything from the other side, I think he's just tired of sitting there, he thinks he's doing the same thing over and over. He's trying to call one or two.
I mean, I wanted to.
I was, you're gonna tell somebody to hold off on the subpoena, let me try to call these people, see if we can get somewhere. And we'll, we'll scratch that one for sure, you know.
Let's scratch that one.
The one in payroll, I don't know what to do about that, we're not getting any of that.
No, the.
There's no records of yet.
No, lessons are.
So the top one and the bottom one, we might get somewhere with a phone call, we'll see.
I didn't realize that second one was even in Brooks County, I guess it is.
It was Berryville.
Berryville.
All right, so I'm good with that. Uh, I'm gonna send this, and I'll blow this to you, I might have to name out it.
Where do you locate it?
How you doing?
Do, do you approach it?
Over there.
Right on the county line.
Right on the county line where the grocery store used to be, right across from Fort and Fertilizer Plant World. Okay.
All right, next is an email from Kim. About the, um, employee evaluations. We're in the process of doing those, right? Yeah. Yeah, that email, and then the, the, what's on the back page, that's all I've got. I didn't know anything about this, I've been to all the county meetings, I had, this is the first I've heard of it. So I don't know. I don't even talking about doing some kind of merit base pay thing forever. We actually, this evaluation form is the same one I got from her last year, when I asked about it. But, um. This is apparently spelled out how it's gonna work, and, and it says the funds are available, so we shall see. Um, I've got the, I'm glad you might, it's making it work on payers, and I've got some grants, I guess. Which means, you got one there for y'all to do.
We can do that.
If you're gonna believe getting that back out in the year, so you can give it to Kim, that's what she's asking for.
And all we've actually got to do is one of you.
Yeah, and I don't even sure that you have to, I just feel better if you did.
We just did one, y'all just had to do one.
Yeah, yeah, you did last year. It makes sense to me, but.
Alright.
Yeah, you, you don't, I, you each got a copy, you can just collaborate however you see fit.
Well, I mean, honestly, it probably wouldn't take just a couple of minutes to fill it out.
And, um, that is it, there's some sales, another one, there's some sales in the back, the, um, regardless of what people say, the, uh, sales prices have not dropped yet.
Mm-hmm. So, Brian, is it, so Roger turned in the sale from the pleasures department?
It is, he paid, you know, quite a million dollars, which is about five percent less than what we had on it, which is, I'm taking that as a good economic asset, this factor for the cell phone. Cause it's a nice easy number to work out, it looks.
That's turning, that, from Tally Farms, it's worth it, Dr. Tally Farms.
Yeah, that was over here, it's the Elizabeth something, it's, um, should be on the list, might not be.
It should be.
Um. Yeah. Okay, it's not there, but, yeah, it's, it was done, it was, so, it did something, but we can't say that way.
I think it was like, what was it, two thirty?
Yeah, something, I think, maybe the last one said one eighty-five maybe?
Yep.
Maybe one eighty-five, kept for a year, from two thirty.
Well, he told me that he was gonna sell, or he was asking what he had, I know. He said that was the worst financial mistake he ever made.
Really?
True.
I, it was just make sure he had it, they one eighty-five, he had it for a year, sold it for two thirty, that's worse, it's easier to make.
I know, boy, he bought a tractor, bought a gator, bought, you know, bought cows, sold the cow, bought cows, yeah, bought, he's, yeah.
Okay.
I know, yeah, you, you can do a lot worse.
I got, that's worse than weed.
I know, yeah, that's right.
Oh, shit. Anyway.
You got the, the work, yeah, pretty easy.
Gentlemen, that is all I've got.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn please. Mr. Chairman, I moved it, we've done it for now.
In a second.
Motion, okay, we're in adjournment.
It's like down seven hours.
Six thirteen.